Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. Let the record reflect the meeting is starting at 6:30 PM. Item number two is recognition of all members present this evening, and we are also being joined by the school board. Thank you all for coming. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under dog individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That now takes us to item number four this evening, and that is general. There is nothing under general this evening. Item number five is committee correspondence to council. Is there any correspondence from council members this evening? Okay, not seeing any. That moves on to item number six. That is public comment. We do not have anyone signed up this evening, but if there is anyone wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address council.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. In regards to the draft 204 draft ordinance amendment, I agree with the staff in a 90-day timeline, please vote to extend this moratorium based upon these reasons. I have read the Maine Forest Service Chapter 20 Interstate Title 12, Section 88869. However, to elaborate more on staff's remarks of Chapter 230, Chapter 179, and 8869, please see the references on top of page 11 of your packet of the Chapter 230, Article 8, and the Saco River Quarter Commission. Are all applicable ordinances current with any amendments, revision, or repealed items since State Chapter 230's revision of 2014? That was 10 years ago. Its previous revision was 1999. Much has happened with climate conversations in the last 10 years. Saco's opportunity is now. Staff needs time to research all local and state cross-sections thoroughly. I believe a more comprehensive look at State Chapter 21, statewide standards for timber harvesting and related activities in shoreland area and conservation, as to how it relates to Saco Shoreland Private Land Ordnance, along with our Chapter 30, 179, and 204 is warranted. I respect Adam Cade's Maine Forest Service comments on page 12 of the Forest Practices Act under Maine Forest Service to being cautious of additional regulation leading to duplication, redundancy, or overlapping regulations. However, until Saco enforces all, I mean all, local, state, and federal ordinances to protect ourselves, every one of us, please, we must add such language to our ordinance. A recent example is a citizen-state M.DOT-TMP appeal was upheld, and major TMP approval was rescinded here in Saco due to failures of the state to follow its own rules and regulations. We have to do our due diligence and look at all the layers and not just at what is presented in front of you. Please have staff take the time to research all applicable cross-sections of ordinances. I was on the ZORSIM Committee. I know the flawed ordinances. I know the ones that have happened since three and a half, four years ago. Please be mindful of that to incorporate any amendment throughout all of the ordinances involved in private land ownership, Chapter 204, trees. Are those relevant ordinances, everyone that is mentioned by staff or by myself, are they current to 2024? Finally, I have inquired and am still awaiting an answer about Chapter 204-4 Tree Warden. I am aware of the code reference to Parks and Recreation of 204.5. However, who is the municipal tree warden? Who or what is the tree committee? I welcome the answer, as well as why, after four-plus years of requesting public comment, is not on every board, committee, or commission's agenda? Why would a city not want public comment on record on all of the committees, boards, and commissions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else wishing to speak to council, please step up to the podium. Okay, not seeing anyone wishing to be recognized. We will now move on to item seven, and that is the approval of the minutes for March 25th, 2024, and April 1st, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, we'll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hack?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes passes 7-0. Okay, item eight this evening. There are no consent items. That now takes us to item nine, action items. We have one, and that is the first reading, the authorization of the referendum question to appear on the June 11th, 2024 ballot. And that is Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The referendum question two approves adoption of the bond order entitled Order Authorizing the City of Saco to Borrow an Amount Not to Exceed $140,749,348 to finance construction of a grade-one through grade-five school and a pre-kindergarten and kindergarten school. As established and written by City Bond Council E. William Stockmeyer, and any needed adjustments as a result of review by the State Board of Education, the total project will be funded 28% local and 72% state. Be it ordered, the City Council approved the first reading of referendum question two in the following referendum order as established and written by City Bond Council E. William Stockmeyer, and any needed adjustments as a result of review by the State Board of Education, order authorizing the City of Saco to borrow an amount not to exceed $140,749,348 to finance construction of grade-one through grade-five school and a pre-kindergarten and kindergarten school, and further move to schedule a public hearing on the order for April 29th, 2024. I move to approve the order and the public hearing scheduled.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Johnston. And with us this evening, we do have Assistant Superintendent Meg Parkhurst, who will hopefully give us a little rundown right now to start.
Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Meg Parkhurst. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Saco Schools, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Superintendent Ray to share the exciting progress to date and give a little bit of an overview for those viewers or members of the audience who may not be familiar with the project. Though we got on the construction list in the 2018 round, this is really a project that's well over 20 years in the making, with Young School in 2004 being condemned. We have teaching staff that are teaching in Saco schools that attended in the modular buildings at Young School as kindergarteners after that building was condemned. So it is a long overdue and very exciting opportunity to be on the state list. Though that school has been in modulars, it does have a strong faculty, staff, and leadership team, but it's not equitable for students in that school, both with the other schools in our district as well as surrounding districts that have stronger facilities at this point. There were site and program committees that were formed just about three years ago, and processes in place to ensure that public input was considered along the way. Both the site and program committees worked in tandem to determine the best long-term solution, leverage the state funds as best as possible, and also look to solve future problems, not just the problems that we face with the current young school situation. C.K. Burns School, at over 100 years old, was 32nd on the list that same year. So our solution included the public funding of a grade-one-through-five school with some additional side aspects to that building that require a local portion, as well as a pre-K.K. school that will be asked in this referendum for city funding. The site, location, size, and available parcels was a challenge in Saco. While we love the downtown location of the current schools, the requirement to have 20 acres and an additional acre for every 100 students put us at properties that had to exceed 30 acres, and that was just for the 1-5 school. In order to accommodate a pre-K.K., we needed a site even larger than that. The site we selected on Route 1 on Millbrook Road is just under 80 acres. There were 26 different agencies or assessments that we collaborated with and consulted with to determine the suitability of the land, ranging from environmental assessments to vernal pool assessments, police and fire consult, planning committee, as well as an extensive Maine Department of Transportation consult, which we finally received last Friday, the final signed traffic movement permit. In addition to that site committee, the program committee sought to have a two-school solution with equity for pre-K. through five students, allowing families to have a single site where siblings would be able to attend pre-K. through five in the same location, create transportation efficiencies rather than dropping at multiple schools that are on opposite sides of Route 1 in town as we do now, as well as a fully separate route that we've had to allocate for pre-K. It solves a long-term lease option for our pre-K. students and allows for a universal pre-K. situation, as well as, though an out-of-town solution, it does provide access from a variety of points to travel north to Portland, to take Industrial Park and hop on 95, or to move through Route 1 south. In looking at the design, I'd like to highlight the flexibility of classrooms, both in our current orientation of clustering grade levels alike, but an opportunity to shift those assignments as needed if we want to have teaming or multi-age arrangements. We have a variety of unified arts spaces where we're really looking towards a future-focused solution, not knowing what unified arts we will want to offer in the next 20, 30, 50, 75 years. We want to ensure that those spaces are flexible and allow us to accommodate things that we might not even yet know about that students need to learn. The outdoor spaces include three playgrounds, a courtyard that has multiple features, both quiet spaces and spaces for interactive water-type play and exploration, as well as eastern trail access, a rooftop classroom, and multiple spaces abutting that eastern trail access that can be used for outdoor classroom spaces. In terms of energy, we have looked to provide a solar lease that will generate almost three-quarters of the required electricity, and an ability to heat and cool with an IRA tax credit that will offset the geothermal required for that. In closing, this has been a long journey to this point. This $140 million total investment in the future of Saco's education is funded at 72% by the state and is truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Saco. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project. We were able to move through the State Board of Education with a robust discussion and question-and-answer period with Superintendent Ray today, and he and I were both pleased at the excitement that this opportunity has brought to our own careers in designing and thinking towards the future of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Any questions for Meg regarding the project or the construction of the building itself? Council or school board? Okay, not seeing any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with us this evening, we also have Attorney Stockmeyer, who I believe will present the wording for the bond referendum.
Sure. If there are any questions on the bond order or the referendum question itself, I think the most salient information I can bring to you is that there were no changes, thankfully. There were no changes today in front of the State Board. I think we would all have all been quite concerned. Had there been any changes at this point in the project? But there were no changes. So we can all rest easy on that point, and I think we're ready to move forward. My understanding is that Michelle is getting the ballot to the company that prepares the ballots tomorrow. She's tending to the posting of the bond order tomorrow and tending to the publication of a summary of the bond order in the paper on Saturday. So those are the most immediate steps with short-term time deadlines. So if there are any questions, I can address those.
Do we have any questions for Attorney Stockmeyer? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. It's a simple question. I'm sure you have an answer for it. Referendum question two. Is there a question one that's out there?
Question one is going to be the approval, or not, I guess, of the school budget.
And I might add that, if I might, the city clerk was concerned that because it was just one line for the approval of the school budget, that she preferred to have it as a number-one question, and then this is number two.
Makes sense. I was just curious.
It was asked last night at the school board as well.
No, it's a good question, right?
Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at the financial statement, question two. There've been some questions about the interest that the city is going to pay on this bond, and I guess I can see there's an estimate of 4% for like a $59,114,593.92. Is that going to be the estimated interest on the new school bond? Am I reading that right? Is a portion of that local and a portion of that state funded, or how does the interest work?
The state, based on the current funding formula, would pay 72% of both the principal and the interest, so 72% of that $59 million based upon that estimate of 4%. The estimate comes from the city's financial advisor, Mr. Joe Quatara, based on current market rates.
Thank you.
Any members of council or school board? Any additional questions? Okay, we're not seeing any. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. Good luck with the project.
Well, I do have one, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Counselor Johnston?
Yeah. Just assuming this passes, how quickly can the city actually go and issue those bonds, given that we've kind of got a property owner in limbo here?
Sure. Once the referendum passes, assuming it passes, the city officials will be meeting with the city financial advisor to come up with a plan of financing. The city will be authorized to issue typically temporary notes to pay for the land costs, to reimburse, to reimburse the city for amounts that have been expended for architect fees up until now, so that those get folded into project costs that are funded by the state, and to pay go-forward costs up until the project is ready to go out for construction bids. Typically, at that point is when you would issue the permanent bonds, but that has to be resolved with the city's financial advisor in terms of the best timing and marketing program for the city's bonds.
And just if I might, it would also depend, as Attorney Stockmeyer, we would meet with also the architect and those people that would be setting up a time schedule so we could know what the cash flow is. So that's when we would probably want to fully finance. But again, Joe Quatara probably advised us on what the best time is, but we'd have to watch the cash flow that we need to do.
Right. So there'll be an anticipated drawdown schedule for the project.
Thank you. I just, you know, wanted to be certain that the other property owner understands that process and that we're still, you know, good to go.
Usually, the closing on the real estate happens with reasonable promptness following the referendum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. So we have a motion on the floor to accept the word- So we have a motion on the floor to accept the wording and public hearing scheduled for April 29th, 2024. We'll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work on this. Okay, that now takes us to item 10, and that is new business. And first up, we have the next steps for the draft ordinance amendment to City Code, Chapter 204, regarding April 1st emergency moratorium on clean clearcutting of the trees.
Would you like me to take that, ma'am?
It's on, it's Counselor Hatch.
Yep. There is no vote this evening, but it is assigned to you, Counselor Hatch, if you would like to.
Would you like me to read in the background and then comment?
I mean.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think the best way, Director Prescott is not available this evening, correct? But you'll be filling in for her.
Sure. So do you want me to just go through the, any of the information? That'd be fine. Okay. So what, as you are aware, we've had the moratorium put into place. And one of the things that I would draw your attention to that is important is the document that Emily Cole Prescott did develop, a memorandum on next steps for the draft amendments to the City Code 204. And she has given an overview as to the issues that have taken place. But one of the things that she did bring up in her memorandum, I would draw your attention to the key takeaways. And I'll just go through those if I might, Your Honor.
Yes.
A licensed professional forester must participate in the development of the local ordinance. A meeting must be held between the Department of Agriculture and Conservation and Forestry and Saco to review the city's forest practice goals. Public hearing would need to be held 45 days before a vote is held on the ordinance. Every person of the city is to receive, should receive a mailed notification of the hearing if Saco was looking to do stricter ordinance than the state law. If the tree ordinance is only specific to certain zones, this mailed notification requirement can be limited to those applicable zones. Saco would need to also notify the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry at least 30 days ahead of the ordinance hearing and to provide a D A C F representation to the opportunity to speak at the hearing. Additionally, the statutory provision states municipal timber harvesting ordinances may not be unreasonable, arbitrary, or capricious, and must employ means appropriate to the protection of the public and health and welfare. A couple of other things I'd like to mention in this memorandum. If there is a more strict requirement of what the state has, then it would have to be, it would have to be a local enforcement action when we develop the ordinance, so that we would have to hire a forester, a certified forester, to go out and to determine what violations may be in place. But if it stays at the five acres the state requires, I believe that we will be in compliance and the, the state would still review any violations. Also, I just wanted to make note that at the meeting of the 22nd, the state forester will be here. And I will send out a memo tomorrow to give you, just remind you, if you could send us any questions you might have, he'll be here to answer any questions that the city council might have relative to developing an ordinance on a local basis that is stricter or not as strict as the, as the state. So that will be put forward to, to the city council next week. Again, the discussion, as I said, on the second page of the, of the memorandum from Ms. Prescott is, goes through all the various things that would have to be done. There are several items noted at the city council meeting which are relevant to the policy review. As was mentioned earlier by a citizen, Chapter 204, City Code. It's a staff's understanding that the memorandum requests that Chapter 204 be rewritten. This chapter currently applies to public trees, not trees on privately-owned land. Based on the council's direction, staff is drafting updates to Chapter 204 to add a section that would include tree protection on privately-owned land. Chapter 230-811 of the City Code was also mentioned. Planning staff recommends no revisions to this section of the ordinance as it is relevant to the shoreline zoning provisions, not trees in general. Please note that the shoreline zoning standards in the Saco River Corridor Commission also have tree protection provisions. Also, the city of Saco has already adopted statewide timber harvesting regulations and shoreline zones. South Portland's tree ordinance, the city of South Portland has adopted a tree ordinance in January of 2024 after three years of the ordinance revision process, which included notification to the Maine Forest Service. Previous tree cutting on properties, councilors mentioned several instances of previous clearcutting in Saco. Planning staff has asked for a list of those properties in Saco that have growth management plans. And so the, going on to the draft ordinance, based on the provisions of the current tree moratorium, it's staff's understanding that the city council is requesting regulations of tree removal operations of two acres or more. Therefore, the staff is working on the draft ordinance options as follows. Update Section 179, 2.01L to include proposals that cut two or more acres of trees as an activity that requires site plan review with the planning board. Update Chapter 204 provisions to include locally administered tree protection permit process by adding tree protection section to be administered through the planning board's site plan review process as outlined in Chapter 179 of the City Code. Update any applicable sections of Chapter 230 to support Chapter 179 and 204 ordinance revisions. Bring forward draft clustered or conservation subdivision regulations that provide opportunities for greater tree protection and smaller lot size on parcels with wooded areas that could be conserved. Begin the process of meeting with the state and incorporating reviews by a licensed forester. So we would have to retain a licensed forester as a consultant. So there are considerations. After careful review of the local ordinance, state statutes, and tree moratorium and staff's council's April 1st meeting, the timeline to adopt a tree ordinance more restrictive than the state law would be at least 90 days. The hiring of a licensed forester will be needed, as I mentioned. The enforcement of tree ordinance will fall to the local Saco representatives. It will have staff time and legal time implications. So that's something I'm sure we'll have to talk about, depending on how the ordinance proceeds. Those are the most salient parts of the memorandum that Director Prescott provided. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them if I can. We do have next Monday, excuse me, apologize. We have April 22nd, when we'll be working on this as well. So again, we'll have the state forester here, the regional forester here, and we'll be able to answer your questions.
Do we have any questions, clarifications? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I took a moment this afternoon to review the video recording of last week's council meeting to be sure my intentions regarding, regarding the emergency moratorium were communicated clearly. I thought they were, but like many political comments made these days, they're always subject to interpretation. So I, I just wanted to clarify for the record tonight before we move into the new business debate on this issue. I'd like to offer the following comments in response to the staff memo that Administrator Bohenko just, just read into the record. Regarding the state regulation, which is pretty much consumes majority of the first page of the memo, to be very clear, I had no interest, and I, I still have no interest, in developing a local ordinance that exceeds state standards. Instead, all I would like to see is our zoning ordinance require by reference full compliance with MRS Title 12, Section 8869 Forest Harvest Regulations, including compliance with the Maine Forest Service, Chapter 20 Forest Regeneration and Clearcutting Standards. We can do that by reference. I did not ask that Chapter 204 of the city zoning ordinance be rewritten. The emergency moratorium language itself contemplates changes, if needed, by amendment. The big difference between rewriting an ordinance and taking a look at the existing ordinance and making adjustments by amendment, which we've been encouraged to do for as long as I've been on the council as we try to deal with making some changes to our current zoning ordinance. Now, post-moratorium, to be consistent with MRS Title 12, Section 8869 Forest Harvest Regulations, the amended tree-cutting ordinance provision should apply to lots larger than five acres, or whatever standard the state requires. I have no interest in being more restrictive than that. I do want to go on record as agreeing with staff that I, I think the recommendation that the ordinance should include the tree protection on privately-owned land exceeding five acres should be pursued. And when you look at page two of the memo, I am in agreement with all those recommendations made by staff. I think they relate to reviewing our current ordinance, looking at our current comp plan, and making sure there's, there's harmony between the two and, and integrating into that references to the state regulations. In addition to those recommendations, I would like to see the ordinance incorporate a level of, of site plan review on parcels that exceed five acres that includes the Maine Forest Service and, and comments on proposed plans. We do the same thing for traffic studies, that we have the Maine DOT weigh in on TMPs, and, and that we make part of site plan review, include some level of, of Maine Forest Service engagement for these parcels that, that meet that standard. And then the last thing I, I would like to see us include in this amendment process is some strong, strong enforcement procedures, including financial penalties. For those of you who pay attention to the Portland Press Herald, there's a property on Sebago Lake in Raymond that the owner decided that they were going to buy the property, cut down all the trees, replaced them with rocks. It was a three-year battle between the town of Raymond and this landowner. And I think it's, it's, it's a good example of individuals, and we see it every day on the main turnpike, who, for whatever reasons, feel like rules don't apply to them. And you can have all the best rules in the world, but if you have individuals with that level of arrogance, it doesn't matter. They're just going to do what they want to do, unless you have very strong enforcement and penalties. So today's, I think it's today's press, or maybe it was yesterday's. The town of Raymond was successful in fining this individual $650,000. Now, that's a penalty, worthy of the crime, if you ask me. And the same article talks about LD 2001, which I have, have not read, but apparently the governor is expected to sign it into law, which should give municipalities new and significant enforcement authority for similar violations. And I think part of the law, and again, I haven't read it, so don't quote me on this, I believe allows for municipal tax liens on properties in order to get payment. So I do think that we need some level of enforcement and penalty included in whatever it is staff manages to, to propose to us and give us a chance to review. I stated this clearly last week. I would like to complete this zoning amendment process expeditiously, hopefully not exceeding the 61 days that we've provided. If we don't have, we don't need time to create our own local ordinance because that's not what I'm proposing. I want to review what we have and improve upon that. And in that process, I would also request that both the planning board and the Conservation Commission contribute to the process because we have some very talented people on both of those boards who I think would, could make a very productive contribution to whatever comes out the other end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate Counsel Hatch's clarification of some of what he was looking for. I think that's going to relieve some of my concerns, but I want to speak them into the record anyway. I, I think drafting a local ordinance is of limited benefit if it mimics what the state already has. Duplicating these regulations, I don't think, provides any additional clarity, guidance, or enforcement mechanisms that, that don't already exist. As outlined in the memo, I think the expense and difficulty of going beyond state requirements is more than the city is able to undertake. Hiring a licensed forester, the time of the review process, the tracking and enforcement, I believe exceeds our, our current capacity, both in terms of, of staff, time, and ability, in addition to, to the length of the process. So I appreciate the, the framework of staying within what the state currently does. I, I do believe there is some merit to, to thinking about our, our trees. And I believe it should come within a larger context. I've been talking to the Conservation Commission for some time about a comprehensive green space policy, thinking about what green space and undeveloped space looks like in Saco, how much we want, where we want it, how much of it should be contiguous, and setting real clear targets and guidance, both for council and for the planning board, on what conservation should look like, of which, of course, a tree policy should be a subset of that or coherent with such a green space policy. And so I believe there should be a larger context for some of this work that should house this. But of course, that takes time, long beyond a 60- or 90-day timeframe. And indeed, I have some concerns about the ability of the conservation, the planning board, staff, and council to enact these changes, even within a 60- or 90-day timeframe. By way of other context, at the Conservation Commission last week, there was a, a site plan visit of the proposed solar farm that I think spurred and triggered our moratorium. And as I understand, the results of that site walk, although I did not participate in it myself, the foresters present estimated that there are simply one to two mature trees per acre on that land, that the, the land had recently been harvested and likely at some point was a, a tree farm or, or other parcel that had been fairly recently clear-cut. And so most of the trees and greenery there was shrub and brush and of less than 10 feet high. And so I have some concerns that we're creating solutions that, that aren't really solving a problem. You know, one, I have more than one to two mature trees on, on my, you know, half-acre lot. We're, we're not really talking about substantial tree harvesting here. And so while I, I firmly believe in the wisdom of thinking about this and thinking about a tree ordinance, I've been advocating it for it for some time, I simply believe the process is, should be thoughtful, should be in line with the state process, shouldn't put a large burden on Saco, which is already having trouble enforcing our current ordinances and zoning, and will likely exceed the 60-day timeframe. And I would be really hesitant for this council to extend the moratorium in order to allow that, especially given the nature of the property that was triggering the moratorium, which it turns out is, is not heavily forested currently.
Thank you. Counsel Hewitt?
I just questioned, do we need another layer beyond our planning board and zoning board? Are we respecting our landholders' rights if we enact another municipal land use ordinance that would regulate forestry and are redundant with the state law? And what would the cost of such a forestry agent be in the enforcement to the city of Saco? Saco?
Is that a question?
Is that a statement or a question? [laughing].
Question? Well, certainly, I'd love the answer tonight, but I probably can't, but I could probably try to give an estimate. I know when you look through the memorandum that Director Prescott provided, it's going to require somebody ongoing. So, you can only surmise that you have to have somebody that's certified in their field to come out. So, I would suspect it will be substantial in what we would have to have, depending on the amount of regulatory activity they have, depending on how often they have to meet with the various people that are developing, how often do they have to go to the various land use commissions. So, you can see that if you had somebody such as this, they would be working actively, and we would probably be spending, I would say, equal to probably a full salary of somebody here at the city.
Counselor Gunn?
I was just going to throw out there that, in reference to Counselor Hatch's comments, if we're really talking about just tightening up the site, site plan authority of the Planning Board with trees, then that goes into what Counselor Berman was saying about really having a high-level discussion and getting the Conservation Commission in the room here to talk about, you know, do we want to have a tree ordinance in terms of, you know, we can only harvest so many trees, you know, per year, or percentage-wise? That's, so, I don't, again, to Counselor Berman's point, perhaps there isn't the need to go a full three-year, you know, ordinance-like, you know, process like South Portland did, though, because, I mean, crossing the I's, dotting the T's, though, I mean, I seriously doubt they wanted to wait three years to take, you know, go that long, though. So, just, you know, tightening up the Planning Board language and the enforcement mechanism, which will definitely tie right into the new Assistant Planner that we're going to have for code enforcement, I think might solve the problem without getting too into the weeds on it, though, and would allow us to have the flexibility as a council and the Conservation Commission to come up with a citywide plan of how we want to handle the issue going forward. So, I think, as I said, I think it can be done, I think, the intent of what Counselor Hatch had can be done relatively quickly, but long-term, though, I mean, you know, we can take our time on that, and there's no reason that we have to try to rush one or the other, or get in the weeds on something when there's really no consensus that we have to kind of, you know, reinvent the wheel on it, which I really don't think we have to, because to Counselor Hewitt's point, and to my points last week, it gave me a lot of pause to, you know, think about having, think about assuming the authority to regulate how people treat trees on their own private property. It always, it's, it gives me pause, though, but if it's about site review, I think that's something we can have consensus on, and certainly about enforcement. I think putting some hard enforcement in for bad actors is something we can all agree on, though, and something that doesn't take, well, certainly not three years.
Counselor Johnson, do you have your?
Thank you. Yeah, I think everybody has good points, and certainly, a week ago, I think it was a week ago, or thereabouts, I didn't know exactly how we go about this. I certainly have my own goals, desires here, and I do appreciate the planner and the rest of staff delivering such a well-informative, concise document for us to take all those considerations into play. But for me, this is kind of a twofold issue, where I, again, personally, it was my goal to have some form of ordinance that's similar to South Portland, that identifies significant trees that we desire to be protected. I mean, I give two examples right now. Some of us will remember, prior to the Wendy's going up on Main Street, there used to be a very old significant tree that was right out front that was cut mid-'90s. Clearly, it stuck with me, so I remember it, and thinking what a shame it was at the time, and looking at that lot, they probably could have configured it differently to actually preserve that tree. And in a personal nature, there's a tree that I, my family cares for, that's on one of our properties, that's well over 100 years. It predates back when Elm Street still had Elms. It's the one surviving left, but it's also directly a shared, it's a shared tree. The property line runs right through it. So, while we maintain it, there's really nothing that prevents the neighbor next door from coming and chopping it down, as I understand it today, outside of, I guess, me yelling and screaming at them. But I consider it a significant tree and one worth preserving, if, you know, at all possible. So, there's that element that I, again, referenced, South Portland, because that's most of what I gleaned from their ordinance that I thought was significant. But then, there, certainly, I had no intent of rewriting the state's law, and I think that's part of the confusion here, as I fully understood what is on the books, so to speak. I've read it before, but that's really specific to timber harvesting, right? So, I'm not looking to regulate timber harvesting. And again, I'm far from an expert, but I think that if you look at that regulation, it's specific to 100 acres or more that fall under that. So, there's still significant areas of land that don't fall under those regulations, or maybe not all of those regulations. Like I said, I don't know 100%, but I do know for certain that five acres or less, I can clear-cut today. Nothing prevents me. The state doesn't regulate that. And looking at the city, and particularly, again, I think to the urban core, or even the outer urban core areas that still have some significant wooded lots, I think those are certainly worthy of, you know, protecting, or at least, you know, seeing what we have there, and not, as I described last week, the potential where property owner says, "Well, I'll just clear it first, then I'll go to site plan, and then there's nothing for you to deal with, it's just a vacant lot." And so, whatever we have currently on the books really won't apply, because as we just indicated about a potential solar farm, it sounds like it's already been cleared. So, I mean, that's, I just, I still see areas of weakness, and I don't certainly think we need to rewrite everything. I think we can strengthen up current ordinances. And again, I don't think I was suggesting we meander into altering the state law. That's clear to me. That's in the areas of commerce, right? That's the way I read the law, and I'm happy to somebody else's interpretation, but the law only applies for those that are in the commercial process of timber harvesting. So, and again, my concern is those that aren't. They're just looking to clear land and with a potential subdivision or whatnot later on. And, you know, another area in that law that is concerning is, there's also the ability to be, that's what I'm looking for, exempted if you are changing the underlying use of the land. So, for example, say I have forested land today, my intent is to put a subdivision in, I will go to the city to do so, but in the meantime, I will clear up to five acres, and then go, I have two-year period, as I understand the law, that then would allow me to get those approvals. Now, I'm kind of hedging my bets, because obviously, if I don't get the approvals, then I'm looking at potential fines, but, you know, given the way some people operate, I wouldn't be surprised that they're willing to hedge that bet. I think we have instances currently, or previously, recently, that, you know, people have hedged a bet on a zone change. So, I just, again, I'm happy to, you know, sit with staff and lay out where I see the weaknesses, but I'm definitely not looking to, again, rewrite the state law on timber harvesting. Thank you.
Counselor Hatch, you had your hand up previously?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor McPhail.
And Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I, this is the issue, is if we, as a council, have consistently suggest that we have no interest in creating a local ordinance that's more restrictive than the state, which is my position, then the whole issue of, you know, hiring staff and doing all this other expensive stuff is a red herring, because it's immaterial. It will not happen. All we need to do is to have our ordinance reviewed by our competent staff in conjunction and reference to state standards, tweak it as they see it appropriate, and give us something. Because I watched that Planning Board meeting when this proposal was put before them, and if you go back and look at that video, you likely will see well-intentioned Planning Board members, they're very smart people, they're doing the best they can, and they're asking about, "Well, shouldn't we have like a forestry study, and shouldn't we do this? And what about, you know, remediation of the site at the completion of its existence, which, you know, could be 50 years down the road?" There's all these questions that I think could have easily been answered, including what's on the site, by just requiring a forestry study as part of the site plan review, and potentially using the Maine Forest Service as a peer review, if you will. Very simple, keep it simple. And if in this case, that site really does not have any limitations in terms of harvesting, then fine, have at it, you know, but let's take steps and precautions in the meantime. And I think that's all I was looking for. I don't want this elongated three-year process that's going to cost us money. I have no interest in that. Thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to just build on what Counselor Johnson and Counselor Hatch just had, and maybe turn them into questions that maybe can be addressed at the next meeting when the regional forester is here. And I guess, you know, when I look at the state ordinance, as in the packet on page nine, there's a change of land use section that does talk about forested land that's going to become housing land, and I'm curious what that covers, right? What is currently regulated by state law and what isn't? And are there gaps that we are perhaps asking the city to fill knowingly or unknowingly as part of this process? What happens to five acres or less? What happens to five acres or more? How does it change if it's going from forested land to residential land? To really give us an overview of what the current state of state regulation is, so that we're asking these questions and directing staff from a position of knowledge and clarity, as opposed to what I feel, at least for me right now, is a bit of unclarity about what the state regulates and doesn't regulate. And then, if it turns out that most of our desired outcomes are already covered by state ordinance, I would suggest that we stop there and just reference it in our ordinance. And if it turns out that there are gaps, such as under five acres, or when there's a change of land use, that then we can provide staff more clear guidance as to what we're looking for and where those gaps are, and what we might seek to get filled. And so, if that can be part of our use at the next meeting, is to really be brought up to speed on what state law does cover and doesn't cover, I think that would be highly informative for me.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, City Administrator, you've got a little more directive for?
Yep, I do, and I will, if anybody thinks of anything that they want to bring, or questions for the district forester, who is Shane Dugan, and he's from the Mass Forest Service, he'll be here on April 22nd to answer questions from the city council. And if you have anything in particular, we will, you just can email me that, and what I'll do is I'll take a look at the recording tomorrow to make sure I have everything, and we'll try to summarize it a little bit. All right?
And can we get, can you give a little bit of clarification? We've had some questions regarding the moratorium, the way that it's written, regarding applicants currently in the process of the Planning Board.
Yes, in discussing this with the city attorney, it's a way, he has read it, that if it's currently in process and is approved, then they would have the right to proceed.
I was just going to clarify for myself, as one that, you know, seconded it, that was my intent. Whoever's already in the pipeline, they could do that.
Right, just nothing new coming in for permits, but as long as they are in the pipeline, in the process with the Planning Board, they can continue to proceed as normal. Okay, so again, on the 22nd, any questions that you would like to present to the state forester, email to citybrahimco, and we'll get some more information and we'll go forward with that.
Yeah, we'll take a look at this tomorrow and just try to synthesize it down to what you need.
Okay, is that it? Any additional comments or questions? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just one quick, I just wanted to dovetail on Counselor Johnson's comment about the value of the memo that we received. I thought it was very well-done, very informative, and, you know, it was kind of, we're up in this vague cloud, and all of a sudden, it gained all kinds of clarity for me. So, I just want to extend my appreciation to you and staff for doing such a good job.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'll pass that along.
Okay. Moving on to Item B under New Business, we do have the fiscal year 2025 budget presentations. We have three departments presenting this evening, and first up is Codes. And that is Director Tumi.
I can be found on page 75 of the budget book. My first slide here shows a group of people I work with in the Code Office. They are dedicated employees, and I'm glad to be proud of their team. This slide here, there's a bunch of numbers that go from March 1st to March 1st, so they'll be more updated. We had another busy year. We processed 1,967 permits, including plumbing, electrical, building permits, 699 were building permits themselves. Of those, 67 were single-family homes, compared to 53 last year, but 67 the year before. So, it's kind of leveling off, it's not going very fast. And when we process permits, we have to do inspections for the projects to get approved. We did over about 23, 24 for a number of inspections. Each project has roughly three to five, some have more, especially commercial. The cost of construction that we brought in last year was $104 million. 60% of that were commercial projects, 40% was residential. A few years back, it was the other way around, residential stripped commercial, but it is now flipped back. My department also handles complaint resolutions. We had about 228 complaints, tenants, neighbors, anybody who calls has a complaint. We either hand them through a phone call, email, or we do site visit, which is the most, we do most often. And when we process the permits, we have to review plans all the way from decks to houses to commercial buildings. We did about 646 plans, and we did this with a staff of five and a half people. It's not a half-person, it's part-time. My electrical inspector works mornings only. Being in a very busy year, we achieved by maintaining a high level of service while construction activity remained very high. I used to be a builder and always waited for the shoe to drop. I haven't seen it. I've been the director for three and a half years, and it hasn't happened yet, and I don't see it in the near future. We, again, issued a record number of permits, it keeps going up, it's not leveling off. We continue to meet the expanded inspection demands because of new construction, and we, no one's complaining that we can't get out there. We are meeting all inspections. We led the region in requiring fire-stopping inspections. It's a new field, it's required in most commercial buildings, so fire doesn't go from one level to the next. I've seen a lot of fire-stopping in the past that does not meet code, and we're up on top of that and making sure it's done properly in the city of Saco. We also contribute a resource for other communities through leadership on both Maine and New England boards. One is MBOA and NEBOIA, one's Maine Builders Association. I was on those boards, now Dawn is on the boards, and my predecessor was on before me. So, we get a lot of knowledge from that and a lot of respect from other communities. Our projects and goals, I'm going to need my glasses, because I can't see that far away. Basically, we need to continue to expand the interdepartmental communications within the city. We're one big team, and we're a part of it, and if we can help any other departments, we're willing to try, and we're always looking for ways to do that. We need to explore ways to be more efficient with a continued increase in construction, and we have a limited amount of staff, so we are very efficient, but we have to find more or, you know, to keep up with what we have. Move forward to the next level of online permitting, application software. Move forward to the next level of online permitting, application software, promoting online applications for all required trades and activities while providing index of contractors. Basically, we have an iWorks program. You can do online portal for all permits, but we still accept paper copies, which we will be eliminating at some point, because we have to hand input all that data. If you did it online, it goes in automatically, so we're trying to find a way to do that so we get our contractors used to doing that. We need to explore the possibility of adding a public access kiosk for electronic file reviews. During COVID, nobody came into the office, everything was forward. Now they're starting to come back, so if we had a kiosk, they wouldn't have to have us pull the files, they could look themselves. So we're looking to ways to do something like that. Basically, because of COVID, we stopped our MDU, multiple building unit inspection programs. We have to try to get that back up and running. We'll have to expect ways to do it, if it's my department or someone else's, but we will try to look into see if we can get that program back on its feet. And short-term rentals, we basically have a very limited short-time rentals, it's just down the beach. If we, council plans on going further throughout the city, we'll have to explore how that program will work. So that's our goal, is to look into that also. And it didn't take long, because the next one is me, and that's the end of it. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Director Tumi? Counsel Hatch.
Thank you, Madam McPhail. Director Tumi, how are you?
Very good.
Just a couple of high-level questions for you, actually, one high-level question. Either it's going to, the answer will come from you and/or a planning, but is there any sense of the residential building permits that were given? How many of those fell into the affordable housing?
Four.
Four?
iWorks allows me to go on the list, and we, actually, all new permits that are under there, we call them under single-family LD 2003 instead of single-family, so we can track those separately.
Good, okay, so that's interesting. That's a very small percentage, at least from my perspective.
And two of them are 1-1 property.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then, a couple of just quick budget-related questions. I'm assuming the, I guess the administrator's change for the overtime line is indicative of the overtime that you anticipate you're going to need to cover the additional workload.
Because of, they're working through, they're lenders now, my staff, so it, just to keep up.
That's good. No, I appreciate that, and I would be the first one to encourage that. We don't want people working for free, they want them to earn their due pay. And then, the other item on the revenue line, we're seeing, and again, it's an administrator's change, $100,000. I'm assuming that that was put in there because historically, that revenue line has been tracking well above budget?
Yes.
And so you want to just upgrade the budget to coincide with a track record?
First six months of the fiscal year, we probably brought in close to $700,000, and we're ahead of this three months of this year than we were last year. So, yeah, we're bringing in more than we have in the past, so.
Okay.
Like you said, we always waited for the shoe to drop, so we didn't want to go too high, but it's not dropping, so we can add the revenues, and we feel comfortable doing that.
Good, I think that's a good move, so thank you. Those are my two budget questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the list tonight, we do have the Clerks Department, and with us, we do have City Clerk Michelle Hughes.
Good evening. The City Clerk's Department budget starts on page 68 of the budget book. Currently, we have the equivalent of three full-time employees in the office. The City Clerk and Deputy Clerk are both full-time. The Assistant City Clerk works part-time on an as-needed basis, and the General Assistance Administrator is currently working 20 hours per week. In addition to the office staff, we have 48 Election Day volunteers. The Clerks Department has four focus areas, which are elections, licensing, records, and general assistance. I will note that the highlights are from July 1st, '23, through March 11th of '24. So we'll start with the elections. For the November 23 municipal and state election, 5,435 voters participated, which equated to a turnout of 32.58%. For the March presidential primary, 2,338 voters participated, and that equated to a 13.83% turnout. We also certified 4,852 petition signatures and processed 1,748 voter registration updates. Under the licensing, we registered 378 businesses. We licensed also, in the Clerk's Office, 1,246 dogs, and we share the dog licensing with the Finance Department as well, and they processed 1,270 of those licenses. For the liquor licenses, we had 20 annual ones and 10 one-day licenses. We currently have 99 annual moorings and 29 people who are on the moron waitlist at this time. We also have 111 victualers at this time. Under the records, we processed 39 Freedom of Access Act requests, advertised 11 legal ads, completed 23 sets of council minutes, codified 11 ordinances, and approved 11 poll permits. Under the vital records, we recorded 119 births, 143 marriages, 173 deaths, and issued 1,460 certified copies. Moving on to the general assistance, we have assisted 84 families, which included 143 people total. Expenditures to date are $77,352.67, and we do also receive reimbursement from the state of Maine at 70%, which is $54,146.87. The City Clerk budget covers the Clerk's Office, voter registration, as well as general assistance, and for the maintenance of effort for fiscal year '25, we're coming in at $412,145. Total revenues that are estimated are $153,927, with a net cost of $258,218. In addition to the maintenance of effort budget, I have requested a few increases under the administrator's changes as follows. Starting with the elections, I'm requesting $2,000 increase in the base pay line for temporary election staff help for the 2024 presidential election. This would be for additional clerks to issue absentee ballots 30 days before the election. They'll also be assisting the week before the election with early absentee ballot processing, so that we're not sending roughly $10,000 absentee ballots to the polls on Election Day. And we also intend on hiring some additional voter registration staff, so that's what that's for. We're asking for $1,800 in contracts line to cover various election advertising, and $2,000 in supplies line to cover printing of the ballots for the November 2024 election. This election is going to be a big election, and the state likes us to have ballots for 100% of the active voters, so we do need to have an increase on that line. Under the City Clerk operations, I'm requesting $5,600 under the fees line to move to the convey 911 translation application. Finance Director Matherin and I have worked together and would like to provide the app to the customer service staff to help with vehicle registrations, marriage licenses, and also for the general assistance office. Currently, the general assistance office uses a translation service where it can take anywhere from a couple minutes up to 15 minutes to be able to speak to an interpreter. This convey 911 is able to provide access to over 350 languages and dialects within 30 seconds of a call, and in addition, they also provide American Sign Language through video. The cost to cover the application, the cost of $5,600 covers the cost of the application, services for the year, and three iPads. And you probably saw a couple months ago, some media coverage, because our police department has actually gone to the convey 911 translation services, and that's how I found out about The last thing is under the general assistance department. I've also requested a $500 increase to the travel line. There's a lot of changes going on in general assistance right now, and the State Department of Health and Human Services, in conjunction with the Maine Welfare Directors Association, has been providing more annual training opportunities for staff, so that's the reasoning Under the fiscal year '24 achievements, the first goal was the evaluation of vital record books by a professional preservation company to identify any books that need preservation or restoration in the next fiscal year. We had planned on having that done at the end of March, but the company that we use had a sudden move from one state to another state, so it's kind of delayed it a little bit, so now it's going to be the end of April. The second goal was to promote the license management system to increase online usage and head towards paperless licensing. The update on that is we moved forward with the last phase of license management with business registration renewal notices being sent out electronically. So businesses now have the additional option to file online and upload their required documents, or if a fee is due, they can now pay online. We'll also be moving forward with the same process for the victual licenses. The third goal was to improve poll-in place process flow for voter registration and voting for future elections. The update on that was on Election Day, the setup was moved a third of the way down the gymnasium, which gave additional room at the front of the tables for lines to form so that people weren't waiting in the lobby or waiting outside. A new accessibility ramp was constructed by the facilities manager, so that both the entrance and the exit at the polling location now have an accessible option. The fourth goal was to coordinate tri-community general assistance meetings to discuss various issues and increase communications between communities, and to date, four meetings have been held. The last thing that I wanted to note was, under the voter registration, the state implemented a new online voter registration system software, and the staff attended training and quickly became proficient in this new software. Fiscal year '25 projects and goals. We'll continue to explore and invest in further educational opportunities for staff to enhance their skills and knowledge. And we also expect that the state is going to be implementing a new central voter registration system throughout the state of Maine, so we'll also be training on that. And they will also be going out to bid for a new tabulation system. And right now, I'm not sure if it's going to be with the same company, or if we're going to be moving to a different company, so there will be lots of training on that as well. We'll continue to enhance the absentee voting and Election Day voting experience for residents, and review and update the general assistance payments and report standard operating procedures manual.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for City Clerk Hughes? You have noted that we did 84 general assistance payments since last, is that an increase from the previous year?
It's about the same.
About the same?
Yeah.
So we're not seeing a large increase in that, it's kind of staying?
Yes, it ebbs and flows, but it's about the same.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Hewitt?
One quick question. You mentioned election software. Have we made any investments in cybersecurity with all the media attention to the upcoming elections? Is there anything you feel we should do?
Well, actually, the state of Maine provides all the election tabulators for all communities, so we're really not involved in that, but I know that they are looking into that as well.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the list, we do have the Finance and Administration. And with us, we've got Director Matherin tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You can find the Finance budget page on 89. The Finance Department is made up of nine full-time employees. We are taking a more traditional route and hiring a deputy finance director instead of two directors. We're in the process of interviewing now. Finance in action. We've had, we've processed 12,150 invoices and purchase card payments, 52,164 customer service transactions, $8.6 million was paid administered through payroll. We have $19.5 million in investment principal, 682 pages of reporting and policy review, and a total of 14 act for awards and 15 annual budget documents. For FY '25, we have projects and goals. Our first one is to complete online customer service. This will help ensure timely payments and more payment options for general billing, continue to issue quarterly statements on general billing, increase vendor EFT payments to reduce printing and postage costs, ensure all contracts for ARPA are in place by 12/31 to prevent any funds being returned to the federal government. We had some achievements in FY '24 that we're proud of. We combined merchant services from eight to three processors, reducing fees, increased collections for ambulance revenue at elevated levels of $95,000 monthly. With our new process of sending out statements, we decreased the amount of outstanding accounts receivable by $86,319 for invoices from 2011 to '21, and employees were encouraged to use P-cards, earning $41,035 in new revenues and rebates. Any questions for Finance?
Counsel Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Director. Just really, a question. I understand you're reorganizing now to hire a deputy director as opposed to the two-director system.
Correct.
Absolutely in favor of that change, but I'm curious why that doesn't produce any savings in the budget? If you can talk more about why that reclassification from a director to an assistant director doesn't yield any salary savings.
Well, I can speak to that. I think what we wanted to do is have the flexibility of being able to bring the person in. It will be challenging to find the person that we need. In fact, I just read an article about auditors, in terms of even them being able to attract accountants and those people that are capable. So at this point, we're going to leave it a little flexible in there, and certainly, they'll fall within the pay scale, but we, you know, if we have additional funds left over, it will just fall to surplus.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, not seeing any.
For Administration, you can find the budget on page 64. The City Administrator's Office is comprised of the City Administrator, Executive Assistant, and Harber- and Harbor Master. The responsibilities of the department are to manage daily city operations, employee relations, and personnel matters, meet with supported entities, advisory boards and commissions, and building strong relationships and partnerships. City Administrator oversees 15 departments, budget development and implementation, meet with members of the public and business owners to resolve challenges, and is also the liaison between the City Council and staff, and also has council agenda management. The budget is mostly comprised of salary of 71%, and then smaller items of training, utilities, supplies, fees, and contracts. Contingency, you can find that on page 20. It's currently budgeted at $387, $447. Contingency covers miscellaneous categories not budgeted elsewhere. It's comprised of tax abatement, senior tax program, bank fees, and miscellaneous items that the City Administrator can draw for, for unplanned expenditures. Property and liability insurance premiums. We've seen a shift in costs due to insurance increasing and also the replacement values on our assets, and this year, we've also included $5,000 for deductions, which we had in the past. Legal fees is $180,220, and this provides historical expenditures for legal fees. For supported entities, you can find this on page 144 of the budget. The city supports a number of entities. Our top three are Dyer Library, BSUB, and Saco Main Street. Dyer Library is budgeted at $859,000, BSUB, $280,000, which comes from TIF, and $30,000 from the general fund, and Saco Main Street is $100,000 covered by TIFs. And you'll hear from them later this month on the 29th. Fee schedules. As Director Sommer mentioned in his presentation, the fee adjustments for summer camp went up. This hasn't been done in the past five years, and covers all the entry fees for field trips and camp t-shirts. Any questions?
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, we're not seeing any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
No, you were nervous, your first one.
Neither.
Okay, so that concludes the budget presentations for this evening, and item 11, we will move on to administrative update.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that the City Hall will be closed on April 15, 2024 in observance of Patriots' Day. Also, I want to just bring you up to date on the ambulance bill reimbursements. We've seen many residents that are concerned with the ambulance billing, which is not covered by insurance. Specifically, there was a concern with the new state law that requires cities and towns to bill patients for treating but not transporting. On March 18, if you recall, the City Council voted in favor of one-year suspension of the $750 treat no transport cost. This week, city staff mailed reimbursement letters and checks to citizens who were billed and made payments for the treat no transport incident, incidents that they had called for. As of April 9, 2024, a total of nine reimbursement letters and checks were mailed, totaling a $5,239.54. Anyone that believes they should be reimbursed for treat no transport, ambulance, and payment and has not received payment by April 24, 2024, let us know, let my office know. I think this has been, I think this was the appropriate way to proceed, and I commend the council for moving in this direction. Just to remind you that Monday, April 22, is the next city council meeting, and the budget presentations we'll be having is Fire Department, Communications, Public Works, Capital Program in assessing. I can answer any questions if the council has them.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just wanted to comment. I had an elderly constituent who called me about the ambulance reimbursement, and she, she was, it's the human side of what we do here, and she was very distraught. She had paid the fee because she pays her bills, but she was very concerned about the impact that that had on her fixed income. So I worked with John, and we did, we got the check back to her, but I think, to your point, John, the council, I think, made a very meaningful human decision to waive these fees or refund, so I, I'm happy to be part of that group that made that decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any counselors with questions or comments or discussion? Okay, moving on to, and that takes us to item 13, and that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Roll call vote. Counselor Hatcher?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 7:56. Passes 7-0.